Good morning. This is Commission Vice President Toshiko Hasagawa convening the regular meeting of July 23, 2024. The time is 10:33 a.m. We're meeting in person at the SCA Conference Center as well as virtually on Microsoft Teams. Present with me today are Commissioners Hawkins, Cho, and Philemon, and they're currently gathered in an executive session, and they're awaiting the opening of the public meeting. Commissioner Mohammed may also call in. We'll now recess into the executive session to discuss one item related to litigation, potential litigation or legal risk per RCW 42.30.1101i and the performance of a public employee per RCW 42.30.1101G for approximately 30 minutes. We'll reconvene back in the public session at 12 noon. Thank you.
Thank you. We're in recess.
This is Commission Vice President Toshiko Hasagawa reconvening the regular meeting of July 23, 2024. The time is 12:04 p.m., and we're meeting in person today at the SCA Conference Center as well as virtually on Microsoft Teams. Clerk Hart, please call the roll for all Commissioners in attendance.
Thank you, beginning with Commissioner Hawkins.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cho?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Philemon?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Hasagawa?
Present.
Thank you. And Commissioner Mohammed?
Present.
Thank you. We do have a full commission here today.
That is wonderful. Thank you so very much. A few housekeeping items before we begin. For everyone in the room, please turn your cellphones to silent. And for anyone participating on Teams, please mute your speakers when not actively speaking or presenting. Also, please keep your cameras off unless you're a member of the commission or the executive director participating virtually, or if you're a member of staff in a presentation and are actively addressing the commission. Members of the public addressing the commission during public comment may turn on their cameras when their name's called to speak, and will turn them back off again at the conclusion of their remarks. For anyone at the dais, please turn off the speakers on any of your computers and silence your devices. Please also remember to address your request to be recognized to speak through the chair and wait to speak until you've been recognized. You'll turn your microphones on and off on your own as needed. All the items noted here will ensure a smoother meeting. Thank you so much. All votes today will be taken by the roll call method, so it's clear for anyone participating virtually how the votes are cast. Commissioners will say aye or nay when their names are called. And at this time, I'd like to open with an acknowledgement that we're meeting on the ancestral lands and waters of the Coast Salish people, with whom we share a commitment to steward these natural resources for ourselves and future generations. This meeting is being digitally recorded and may be viewed or heard at any time on the port's website and may be rebroadcast by King County Television. Now, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe seated. Now, the first item of business today is the approval of the agenda. As a reminder, if a commissioner wishes to make a general comment for or against an item on the consent agenda, it's not necessary to pull the item from the consent agenda. Rather, you may offer general supporting or opposing comments later on in this meeting once we get to that part of the agenda. However, it is appropriate at this time, if a commissioner wants to ask questions of staff or wishes to have a dialogue on a consent agenda item, to request that it be polled for separate discussion. So with that, to my colleagues, are there any items to be polled from the consent agenda or any motions to rearrange the orders of the day? Going once, going twice. Commissioners, the question is now on the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Mohammed.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Cho and seconded by Commissioner Mohammed. Is there any objection to approval of the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is now approved. So next on our agenda is the Executive Director's Report. Executive Director Metrick, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We are now well into the busy summer travel season, and our passenger numbers continue to trend positively from pre-pandemic levels. I want to commend everyone working at the airport, our employees, our TSA and CBP partners, airline and tenant employees who are doing a phenomenal job during a very busy year. Last week offered another example of how teams adjust to circumstances of a very busy summer season. While the port's own systems were not impacted by the global crowd strike outage, partners around the world were, and our passengers at the airport were impacted as well. Our team supported customers experiencing delays or cancellations and worked hard to keep operations on track. One strong sign of the continuing international travel recovery is the strong activity through our international rivals' facility. The IAF is experiencing an average of 14% activity increase compared to 2023. On June 29, the IAF broke a major milestone to processing more than 10,000 passengers in a day for the first time in our history. We did not expect the June 29 day, one-day processing record of 10,136 passengers to be the high-water mark for too long, as travelers keep coming through SCA. We expect these numbers to continue to trend upward, especially with Taiwan-based China Airlines launching five new nonstop flights a week to Taipei from SCA starting last week. SCA welcomes this announcement, as passengers will now have even more options to reach Asia directly. Each new direct flight represents a significant economic impact to the regional economy. Over in maritime, we are officially halfway through our busy cruise season. Operationally, we've had some challenges with unauthorized vehicles picking up guests, but continue to work with authorities on addressing this issue. And of course, work on Pier 66, the Shore Power Project, moves ahead with the arrival and placement of the transformer. We are currently targeting early September for our first connection of a ship to the Shore Power. Ships are sailing above capacity, so we are expecting some upside financially as we wrap up the second quarter financials. We continue to emphasize economic development and community engagement throughout our cruise season. On August 3, Holland Americas Lines Eurodam will host the suppliers event to highlight the local businesses who help provision ships in Seattle. In addition, our team will continue working with cruise companies to coordinate ship tours focused on demonstrating environmental and sustainability efforts. This is a great tour if you have not had the opportunity to take it. Commissioners, strong performance in our operations is a key indicator for our overall governance and performance. Members of the port's finance team met with credit rating agencies last month to share the port's finances, operational status, and plans in connection with the port's upcoming airport revenue bond sale. These meetings help investors assess the relative stability or risk of port bonds. I'm very pleased to report that all bond ratings were affirmed, and Moody's raised our outlook from stable to positive. These strong ratings make port bonds a more attractive investment, and port bonds play an essential role in helping the port fund its $5.8 billion five-year capital improvement plan. Later in today's meeting, we will share how these developments play into our budgeting process when we present a 2025 Budget Development Briefing for you. Moving to today's commission meeting, I'd like to highlight a couple of items on the agenda. On the consent agenda, we seek your authorization to execute a contract for security services at all maritime and economic division facilities, where the port and not a tenant is responsible for security. Security services are required for compliance with U.S. Coast Guard regulations, as well as to safeguard the public, tenants, contractors, vendors, port staff, and the physical assets themselves. The port requires security contractors to provide training to meet Washington State Security Guard standards, among other licensing and training requirements. Under New Business today, we will seek your authorization for the first step in renewing and replacing our satellite transit system, the STS. First constructed in 1973, modernizing this system is critical for efficient operations and positive customer service here at the airport, and I'll have more to say about that when I introduce the item. Under Staff Presentations, you'll receive a briefing on our 2023 Apprenticeship and Priority Hire Program, which was originally scheduled for our last commission meeting. With that, Commissioner, this concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Executive Director Metrick. And we are now at Committee Reports. I'd like to introduce online Commission Strategic Advisor Erica Chung-Hool will provide the report. Go for it, Erica.
Good afternoon, Vice President Hasagawa, President Mohammed, and Commissioners Executive Director Metrick. Today, I have one committee report for you. On Tuesday, July 16, Commissioners Hasagawa and Cho convened the Aviation Committee. The committee discussed a dispute resolution process for disciplinary actions of taxi drivers. Progress is being made on agreed areas, with new training for curbside managers and improved data capture strategies planned for the next curbside management contract. Commissioners expressed satisfaction in the progress that was being made on this topic. The committee also convened the SCA Access Program, which focuses on enhancing accessibility at the airport. SCA Access has achieved a high third-party ranking and has several upcoming initiatives that will further improve service. Commissioners also indicated their support for this program and commended staff on their excellent work bolstering accessibility at the port. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Erica. Are there any follow-up questions regarding committees or any questions for Executive Director Metrick at this time? Seeing none, we are at the Public Comment section of our agenda. The Port Commission welcomes public comment as an important part of the public process. Comments are received and considered by the commission in its deliberations. Before we take the public comment, we'll review our rules for in-person and virtual comment. Clerk Hart, please play the recorded rules.
Thank you, Madam Commission Vice President. Give me one moment here to pull it up.
At the end of the speaker's comment period. The commission accepts comments on items appearing on its agenda and items related to the conduct of port business. Presiding officer will ask speakers to limit their comments to these topics. This rule applies to both introductory and concluding remarks. Disruptions of commission public meetings are prohibited. General disruptions include, but are not limited to, the following: Speaking before being recognized by the presiding officer. Holding or placing banners and signs in the meeting room in a way that endangers others or obstructs the flow of people or view of others at the meeting. Intentionally disrupting, disturbing, or otherwise impeding attendance or participation at a meeting. Refusing to follow the direction of the presiding officer or security personnel. Attempting to use the comment time for purposeful delay without conveying a discernible message. Using the comment period to assist in the campaign for election of any person to any office or for the promotion of or opposition to any ballot proposition, except when addressing action being taken by the commission on a ballot proposition appearing on its agenda. Directing public comments to the audience. Engaging in abusive or harassing behavior, including but not limited to derogatory remarks based on age, race, color, national origin ancestry, religion, disability, pregnancy, sex, gender, sexual orientation, transgender status, marital status, or any other category protected by law, the use of obscene or profane language and gestures, assaults or other threatening behavior, and sexual misconduct or sexual harassment. For safety purposes, individuals are asked not to physically approach Commissioners or staff at the meeting table during the meeting. Individuals may provide written public comment before or after the meeting, and in addition, speakers may offer written materials to the commission clerk for distribution during their testimony to the commission. A detailed list of the public comment rules is available through the commission clerk. If a meeting is disrupted by an individual in attendance in the meeting room or by an individual providing public comment in person or virtually, the port will impose progressive consequences that may result in exclusion from future meetings. Written materials provided to the clerk will be included in today's meeting record. The clerk has a list of those prepared to speak. When your name is called, please come to the testimony table or unmute yourself if joining virtually. Repeat your name for the record and state your topic related to an item on the agenda or related to the conduct of port business. For those joining virtually, when you have concluded your remarks, please turn off your camera and mute your microphone. Our public comment period will now commence. Thank you again for joining us today.
Thank you, recorded voice person. Clerk Hart, please call up our first speaker.
Thank you. Let me get the timer up. And we have one sign up today from Barbara McMichael. Barbara, if you could repeat your name for the record and your agenda item or topic related to the conduct of port business, please.
Great.
Welcome, Barbara.
Thank you. Barbara McMichael here, defenders of Highline Forest, and my topic is regarding the port's agreement to purchase the parcel from the city of Des Moines. As a Des Moines resident, I listened to all of you legitimately wonder at your Port Commission meeting last week why there hadn't been better communication with the public about this proposed development earlier on. I'm back today to give you a little background on that. Until November of last year, we had a city manager who'd also taken on the role of Economic Development Director. That city employee kind of thought he was the boss of the city council, and for several years, he was pretty successful at quieting, muscling alternative viewpoints, sometimes even to the point of censure. Public communication wasn't just a low priority; in fact, it was discouraged. Late last year, the city council had asked the city manager to move on. But at various city council meetings, I've heard many different residents come before the council to beg the city to bring a communications professional on board so that we'd have a better understanding of what's going on. Maybe that's worked to the advantage of the port's development strategy to go ahead and pursue developments around the airport without any major pushback. But I can tell you today that thanks to the discussion the Commissioners had last week, we are pushing back in Des Moines. Today, we'll be submitting a challenge to the city's acting CPO officials' determination of non-significance for Des Moines Creek Business Park West. Given the context of a catastrophically hot summer across the globe, and here are record-breaking and breaking temperatures at Sea-Tac, it seems totally significant that we should not be removing 836,000 square feet of vegetation to build a 400,000-square-foot facility that will have an asphalt lot large enough for 400 parking stalls and that will generate an additional 868 vehicular trips daily. This growth isn't sustainable. We remember that you are the boss of the staff. They're an excellent staff, but their development, not the other way around. And we citizens are ultimately the boss of you, but we're very collaborative. So we encourage our Commissioners to think globally but act locally and demonstrate true leadership in the face of this environmental crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have anybody else signed up.
Is there anybody else in the room or online that did not sign up in advance but would like to address the commission? Going once, going twice. Well, that concludes our public comment for the day. And at this time, Clerk Hart, can you give us an synopsis of the written comments that we've received?
Thank you, Madam Commission Vice President. We have not received any written comments for today's meeting.
Hearing no further public testimony, we will move on to the Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion. Items removed from the Consent Agenda will be considered separately immediately after At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda covering items 8A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L.
So moved.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Cho. Do I have a second? And the second has been made by Commissioner...was that Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. At this time, does anybody have any comments on any of the Consent Agenda items? Well, for myself, I just want to let the public know that I did inquire regarding to the Security Guard contract that is before us. I asked who the contract would go out to, and they said that it's actually going to go out to a competitive bid, therefore, we don't know to whom the contract will be awarded. I asked about security personnel training, to which I was informed that the port requires the contractor to provide training to meet Washington State Security Guard standards, leading to every security guard being licensed by the state, that the company is also required to provide training and certification as a Washington State flagger for directing traffic, and that we require the company to train their staff to the U.S. Coast Guard Maritime Security Standards found in Title 333, the Code of Federal Regulations, Part 101 and 105, that all training is a responsibility of the contractor. Additionally, we hold the contractor to our Port of Seattle Code of Conduct, as well as our RACE values, OEDI anti-discrimination standards, and compliance with our policies and procedures. These policies, procedures, and standards are shared with the companies within the RFP that we advertise. I asked specifically about de-escalation training, and they confirmed that, yes, it's part of the Washington State Security Guard certification training. Seeing no further comments, Clerk Hart, please call the roll for the Consent Agenda.
Thank you for approval of the Consent Agenda, beginning with Commissioner Hawkins.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Cho.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Philemon.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasagawa.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Thank you. Five ayes and zero nays for this item.
The motion passes. At this time...so sorry, give me just one second. We will move on to New Business. I don't have it on my page, but we are on Item 10A regarding authorization for the Executive Director to advertise and execute contracts for technical consulting, project definition services, and project management support to prepare pre-design and bridging documents and to utilize port crews in support of the development of the project definition document, a satellite transit system renewal and replacement project at Seattle Tacoma International Airport, in the amount of $9 million. Since I just introduced the topic, I will turn to Executive Director Metrick...
Thank you.
...to say a bit more.
Thank you, Vice President Hasagawa. Commissioners, at our last meeting, you approved an item related to the Automated Train Control System. Today's action is the first step for renewal and replacement for the entire satellite transit system. First implemented in 1973, the STS was one of the first train systems in the United States to be automated. The last modernization occurred in 2003. The system is nearing the end of its useful life, and a project definition document must be developed to address future growth in the aging tunnel. I recently toured behind the scenes of the system, which is superbly maintained by our SCA team, but it's getting harder and harder to maintain, and it is time for us to begin the work to replace this and renew this critical system. We anticipate this item coming back to commission sometime in 2026, once the project definition document is complete. The presenters this afternoon are Carrie Stevens, Director, Aviation Facilities and Capital Programs, and Faith Kim, Aviation Capital Development Manager. So I'm going to turn it over to Carrie to kick us off.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Executive Director Metrick. As Steve said, I'm Carrie Stevens, Aviation Director for Facilities and Capital Programs. I'm here to discuss and request our authorization for the initiation of a significant and essential new program, the Satellite Transit System Renewal and Replacement Program. I have with me Faith Kim. She's the Capital Programs Development Manager that led this program development so far and will be leading it throughout the planning and project definition phases. We're here to present our initial request for authorization to proceed with those project definition documentation, as well as the preparation of pre-design and bridging documents. Next slide, please. So the satellite transit system is commonly known as the STS. It's our airport people mover, or APM, for SCA. The system to orient you a little bit, it's a three-line system, all underground. The two loops actually connect us to all of our six concourses, and then we have the single-line shuttle that goes between the north and south, the north and south main stations. The system sees significant use, specifically with our hub carrier in the North, Alaska. And in 2023, we saw close to 2/3 of our annual passenger demand for the whole airport going through our satellite transit system. Next slide, please. So the renewal and replacement of the STS system, put simply, is essential to the overall operation of the airport, specifically since it is our only mass passenger connection to the NNS concourses. Over the past several years, we have performed various studies and planning assessments of the STS system, vehicles, tunnel systems, and structure. We have conducted a long-term passenger conveyance study to review the alternatives, including new tunnels and various types of APM systems, looking at constructability, operational impact, passenger capacity, cost, and schedule. We concluded our best-performing option was to replace the STS system utilizing the current tunnel configuration and rehabilitate the tunnel structures and supporting infrastructure. We also determined that a new pedestrian connection between D and N concourses would assist in lessening the impact of the significant amount of work and downtime we are anticipating with this program, as well as provide a redundant route for passengers, providing needed circulation flexibility. Next slide, please. A little bit of history. Steve kind of mentioned some of this. The STS was first implemented in the early '70s with the addition of our NNS concourses. At that time, it was only the second APM in the nation, right behind Tampa. I think Tampa was in '71, and we were around '73. The system renewal was...a system renewal was accomplished in the early 2000s, when they replaced all the cars plus the electrical and control systems. So typically, an APM's service life is around 30 years. It's mainly dictated by the lifespan of the vehicles, which are considered million-mile cars. The project to replace the control system, as Steve discussed as well, is currently proceeding, and we expect our current cars to reach their end of their useful life between 2030 and 2035. Next slide, please. So the current cars are not only getting up there in miles, they are also significantly ...are specifically designed and sized for our tunnel requirements. The vehicle development and fabrication will take several years, which is why we are starting this program now in 2024. One of our additional challenges is the age of our tunnel structures and systems. At 50 years old, we are seeing significant cracking and water penetration. The last replacement in the 2000s focused mainly on the system and station renewal. This replacement will need to focus on those areas, as well as the structural and electrical system rehabilitations, all while meeting our current peak demands. The proposed pedestrian connection between the D and N concourse will not only assist in the faster circulation during construction, but will also provide us with added resiliency in a redundant pathway, allowing passengers another route and better downtime for system maintenance. I'll turn it over to Faith now to talk a little bit more about the program definition documentation that we are requesting, as well as our pre-design work that we are requesting this authorization.
Next slide, please. So the PDD, just to give you a definition, so it is a project definition document, and it is required as a bridging document before project design. And it will be used as a starting point to refine a project, concept approximately 15% design level of the preferred solution. And it will also address sustainable goals, and we're looking at approximately about 112 weeks for our duration, which is a little bit over two years. Next slide, please. And Carrie, talk a little bit about the challenges that we're currently facing with the STS and how the PDD will address. So for example, aging tunnel. In the PDD, we'll be evaluating alternative structural rehabilitation concepts, as well as developing preferred concept up to 15% design of the tunnel, and as well as the north pedestrian connector. To address the end of life of the STS vehicle, we'll be developing different concepts for STS system replacement. And overall, the PDD will also review previous study that was performed, as well as analyzing existing condition, and also perform additional site survey needed and also conduct risk assessment needed. Next slide, please. And this is a very high-level timeline of what the STS replacement program looks like. Just to give you a little bit of an idea, so this is still very preliminary. This timeline may change. This timeline may change, as we know more about the scope through the PDD. But what we're looking at is 2024, so right now. When we get the approval for the funding to start the PDD, we will execute the service directive and get the PDD started. And after that, we will be doing the pre-design engineering, and then design vehicle procurement after that. And we are currently estimated to start construction in 2030, and project completion by 2036 is what we're estimating. Next slide, please. So what we are requesting here for authorization today is, number one, advertise and execute contracts for technical consulting, project definition services, as well as the project management support, and also prepare pre-design and bridging document needed, and also to utilize the port crews in support of the STS renewal replacement project. And the amount of the request is total of $9 million today. I think that's all from us today.
All right. Thank you very much for that presentation. Are there any questions from the staff, for staff from Commissioners at this time?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Any comments? Doesn't have to be a question, y'all. All right. Well, seeing none, is there a motion and a second for, to approve Item 10A?
So moved.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Cho and seconded by Commissioner Calkins. And if there's no further comments...
That was Commissioner Phelamyn.
Thank you for the correction. Please note for the record that the motion's been seconded by Commissioner Phelamyn. And if there's no further questions or comments from my colleagues, Clerk Hart, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, Vice President, beginning with Commissioner Calkins.
Aye.
Can you repeat that? It didn't come through.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Chough.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Phelamyn.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Hosagawa.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Thank you. Five ayes and zero nays for this item.
Thank you. The motion passes. We're now here at presentations and staff reports. Clerk Hart, please read the next item into the record, and Executive Director Metrick will introduce it.
Thank you. This is Agenda Item 11A, the 2023 Apprenticeship and Priority Hire Annual Report.
Commissioners, the port's support for apprenticeship and priority hire programs is fundamental to economic development and equity objectives. This presentation will share the successes and challenges and offer a look forward on how we can enhance and improve this program for even greater community benefit. We have number presenters this afternoon. We have Brian Sweet, Director, Engineering and Construction Management, Samuel Pierce, Construction Labor Priority, and I'm sorry, I'm the third.
Errol Garnett. He's our...
Cartrell.
Cartrell, bye.
Sorry, Errol.
Folks of a certain generation.
Okay.
Nice.
Sorry, Errol. Thank you, Errol.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Brian Sweet. I'm the Director of Construction Management for the Port of Seattle, and we are here today to present the 2023 Priority Hire and Apprenticeship Report. Next slide, please. The Priority Hire and Apprenticeship Teams consist of really three different departments. Engineering, led by Janet Zahn, who's a chief engineer, myself, Sherry Cook, who manages our project labor agreement, Sam Pierce, and Errol Cartrell, did I get that right? Cartrell. And then also, probably one of the more important is Stacy Haugice, who does all of our data collection and analytics. Also involved is the Office of Equity and Diversity, led by Bookta, and then also Anna Pavlik, Carl Hugel, and then also supported by Labor Relations on the PLA project. Next slide, please. So the Priority Hire and Apprenticeship Program is really key towards, as we say here, developing economic activity and positive community involvement. And through these programs, we're able to increase family wage jobs, careers in construction, and also improve access to our projects in general. The program started back in 2016 through several resolutions by commission, last updated in 2018. Next slide, please. And for this year, there are in total of 50 projects that are involved in, reported out here in this report, that include the apprenticeship program. The Priority Hire projects in the data were based on 10 projects that fall under the Priority Hire requirements. Total of, though, we did have a total of 22 PLA projects also underway in 2023, and then again, a total of 50 projects that have contributed to our apprenticeship goals and objectives. And to discuss a little bit more about some of those results, I'm going to turn it over to Sam.
Thank you, Brian. I'm Sam Pierce, the Priority Hire Apprenticeship Utilization Manager. 2023 was a very, very busy year. In 2023, through the life of the projects, 1,642 apprentices worked nearly 1 million hours. There were 535 apprentices of color that worked 324,000 hours. There were 153 women apprentice with nearly 119,000 hours worked. 525 apprentices earned $9.3 million. 229 million construction payouts went to contractors in the Priority Hire and Apprenticeship Program, with over $61 million paid in construction workers' wages. Next slide, please. Now, this slide shows the historical performance of the last four years. You will see increases in apprenticeship utilization, and we can attribute that to the participation along with my position, and also providing real-time data to contractors on a regular basis. By providing our real-time data, we can look ahead and see if there's going to be any issues that a contractor might face in completing their project. In 2023, the non-PLA projects continue to have strong utilization of POC, people of color, in the following crafts: roofers, painters, sprinkler fitters, and sheet metal workers. These crafts historically have had the highest POC participation on port projects. Next slide, please. Since the implementation of the Priority Hire Apprenticeship Utilization Program in 2021, we have been able to look back and create reporting that allowed us to look back on trends for this program. In 2023, we achieved our 12% apprenticeship utilization goals for women. This year, contractors continue to receive regular updates as to how they are performing against project goals. This increased awareness has contributed to overall performance by allowing for early intervention to assist contractors in meeting their goals and identifying any challenges. The next slide, please. In 2023, the port major construction projects provided opportunities for 525 apprentices across 48 different crafts. The craft that utilized the most apprentices were inside electricians and laborers. Now, on the left, you can see the other craft that contributed significant numbers of apprentices. I want to take this opportunity to thank our labor partners for all of their efforts to provide quality workers and help grow the workforce in this region. I also like to thank our pre-apprenticeship programs for their efforts in providing quality workers for us also. At this time, I would like to turn over the report to Errol Cartrell, who will provide an update on Priority Hire. Errol?
Good afternoon. The Priority Hire Program mandates that port contractors to hire workers from 43 economically disadvantaged zip codes defined by King County. The goal is for these workers to complete 20% of total labor project hours annually. On the next slide, you'll see a list of the zip codes. Next slide, please. These are the zip codes. Next slide, please. In 2023, we had 10 projects, 247 journey workers, and 43 apprentices earning nearly $2.98 million in wages and benefits. These are dollars that went directly back into the communities that you saw in the previous slide. Next slide, please. In the past two years, in 2022, we had 93 Priority Hire workers. In 2023, we have 283. That's an increase of 190. With that, I will pass it back to Brian for closing remarks.
That concludes our presentation. Our report is published. Were there any questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
At this point, I will turn to my colleagues if they have any questions or comments. Commissioner Cho.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. One question I had, if we can go back to the graph that you showed of Priority Hire utilization over a three-year period. One more. Could you please mute? So, this was interesting to me, and you may not know the answer to this question, but explain to me why there's such a huge difference in POC utilization between PLAs and non-PLA contracts?
Well, I think what happened is, in this instance, is that the non-PLA projects basically have the people of color, they utilize more people of color on those particular projects because of the crafts that are being, specific crafts are being utilized on those specific projects.
I see. So for those not, so what you're saying is that there are more POCs doing certain jobs than others, and therefore, the non-PLA projects have more POCs as a result of that?
Yes, and also because they are utilizing non-union companies also, and non-union companies tend to have more workers that are people of color.
And there's more projects.
And there were more projects also.
There were more projects that were non-PLA?
Yeah, 28 to 22, yeah.
Yeah, but these are not absolute numbers. These are percentages, so that's not really relevant, right?
Yeah.
So you don't think that it's because of our PLA? You just think it's because of the nature of the jobs?
No, it's not because...
Of the contracts?
Right, right.
Okay, I just want to make sure our PLAs are not the barrier...
No, it's not.
...to employ more POCs.
No, it's not, no.
All right. And then the second thing that I had, let's see here, if we can go to the zip codes that you showed us. You know, oftentimes, or maybe not oftentimes, sometimes the thing that I hear about Priority Hire is that the geographic boundaries are too restricting, that we have a labor shortage, and that's what contributes to sometimes the inability for us to use Priority Hire. Is that the case still? Or, because I've heard folks, without doing any one of the bus, suggest that we should increase the geographic region under which we can use Priority Hire.
Well, for our projects, the Priority Hire goal is 20%. And all of our projects, we have been able to meet that 20% goal. So I think in the future, we're looking at increasing that number maybe by 2% to 22%. But right now, we're not having any challenges meeting the 20% goal that's set for Priority Hire.
Sounds like we need to raise the bar a little.
Yeah, we need to raise it, yes, yes.
Great, thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
To my colleagues online, do you have questions or comments for presenters?
Not for me.
Not at this time.
I'd like to know about the collaboration with Sound Transit in King County, and perhaps the City of Seattle.
So Commissioner, you're asking if our collaboration on our PLA with, on Priority Hire relating to the Priority Hire Program? Can you clarify that question a bit more?
Yeah, yes, I thought we were like pooling our talent pools to be able to draw from each other's... Is that me?
Please continue, Commissioner.
You know, I thought there was some collaboration to make sure that we had a, maybe a broader reach of potential employers, employees.
We do have regular meetings, regional public owners groups, that we do sit and have conversations with about various challenges and successes in our programs, both apprenticeship and Priority Hire. And typically, we'll share ideas, have, kind of have those conversations, see what's working, what's not working. From that sense, yeah, we do pool our resources and work together to try to improve the program. But in terms of monitoring and execution of our Priority Hire program, we don't typically will share resources or personnel.
Okay, great. So that map, I see you have like Everett in two places, and on the zip codes. And I'm trying to look at the map, and that's not Everett, is it? Or maybe, is that the upper reaches? That really is Everett?
I believe it do, and those are... I was gonna say, Commissioner, there are zip codes that are outside King County, Pierce and Snohomish County, and those are within, so the King County Priority Hire Program zip codes, which is the ones the port utilizes, are based on, developed by King County, and so those are the zip codes that we use in our program.
So we just don't draw from outside of King County?
Yeah, we do. We do include those areas outside of King County, that is part of the monitoring of the hours worked by Priority Hire workers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there, and perhaps this is a question for Director Gaisar, and I'm not sure if she's with us. She is, wonderful, welcome, Director. But why do we use the King County's, King County's map or jurisdiction of disadvantaged zip codes instead of something like the port's equity index?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Commissioner. And Brian, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the commitment that regional public owners made, so all of us as governments committed to using the King County zip codes. Of course, this question has been brought up over the last few years, a few times, by commissioners, because we see that as a result of cost of living and gentrification, of course, as more people are moving outside of King County, should we use the equity index and use zip codes beyond what King County uses? Is a question that's come up multiple times. But currently, we are using the same zip codes that King County, City of Seattle are also using. Brian, did you want to add to that?
I was just, I was going to confirm that is correct. That is how, that's the correct assessment.
Thank you. And I'll just add, as a resident in 98144, it's not just Mount Baker, that's also Beacon Hill, which is a historically redlined neighborhood where Black, Japanese, Filipino, Chinese, Native American, and actually Italian residents were legally allowed to live before civil rights were passed in this nation. So I just wanted to shout out 98144 in Beacon Hill. All right, well, seeing no further comments or questions from my colleagues, thank you very much for the presentation, it was very informative.
You're very welcome.
Have a wonderful day. Okay, we're going to move forward in our agenda, and at this point, I will ask Clerk Hart to read it into the record, and Executive Director Metrick will introduce it.
Thank you. This is Agenda Item 11B, the 2025 Budget Development Briefing.
Commissioners, the port is now fully underway in its preparation for the 2025 budget. Today's preview of the budget development process is one of the series of budget briefings that will take place before formal commission reviews and approvals later this fall. And the presenter, oh, it's me that's presenting, along with Michael Tong, as our CFO, Dan Thomas normally would, but he's not here today. So Commissioners, as I was mentioning, summer is a busy time in our operations, but we're, since they're at their peak, and we begin planning it for developing for our 2025 budget in earnest now. Next slide, please. I'd like to begin by discussing the general state of the port, the environment we're operating in, our principles and strategies, some budget considerations and drivers, and finally, the calendar for the rest of the year. Let us begin with the big picture and some positive news. Our margins are generally increasing because of strong revenue growth. In the recent past, we've done a very good job of seizing the best growth opportunities. However, looking ahead, we expect revenue growth to moderate over time, which is not as good news. The investments we've made over the years in maritime and cruise are online now and mature, so the growth horizon from here is more challenging to have additional growth. Faced with a forecast of slower revenue growth in the future, we have two primary strategies. The first is... The first is to prioritize new revenue, and the second strategy is to contain and prioritize expense growth, which has been trending around 15% per year since the pandemic. We are closely monitoring this as continued 15% expense growth is not sustainable. I may want to provide some perspective. I also want to provide some perspective on our operations, which, as you can all know, is a main driver of our revenue. So if I can show, could you go to Slide 7? I want to touch base on this on the operations first. So first, I'll start with aviation. SEA is having an exceptional year, as I was reporting in my executive director report. Airport passenger volume is 4.3% higher compared to the same period last year, is forecast to be 2.1% above 2019 pre-pandemic volumes for the year. Airport non-aeronautical revenues are showing continued strength and are anticipated to exceed budget forecasts by 9.4 million or 2.8%, mainly due to higher revenues in public parking and rental cars. It is incredibly busy with construction in our most congested areas, and every time you come to the airport, you can see the progress or the expansion of those construction areas. Our aviation team is doing a phenomenal phenomenal job of keeping the airport running and expanding economic activity while we continue on on a number of major capital projects as we drive towards 2026 and the FIFA World Cup coming to Seattle. Next slide, Slide 8, please. Moving to our seaport, the 2024 cruise season representing the 25th year of cruises between Seattle and Alaska began April 6 and will continue through October 28 with projected 275 sailings at 1.7 million revenue passengers. We are on track for a very strong year and have an opportunity to exceed passenger budget forecast, as I was reporting earlier, if occupancy remains strong through July and August. It is important to note that cruise has provided an incredible revenue upside for the port since it started in earnest 25 years ago. And last month, of course, you know, you approved a groundbreaking long-term agreement with Carnival Corporation, which has the potential to not only deliver upwards of $185 million in revenue to the port, but accelerate many of our environmental and economic development goals. So we are looking to replicate that success across more of our cruise agreements as well. Next slide, please. Over at our joint venture with the port of Tacoma, the container activity through the Northwest Seaport Alliance was initially projected to be slightly down over 2023. But as you know, and have been briefed by the Seaport Alliance, NWSA has had a stronger year than anticipated. We'll continue to work with the Alliance on new sources of revenue that benefit the port and drive regional economic activity. So I have included these three lines of business, the Airport, Cruise, and Seaport Alliance, because these lines of business are what keeps ports running primarily in terms of revenue. So back to Slide, please, 3, please. So Commissioners, I want to spend a few minutes on the global big picture for you and for the the public on trends that influence our strategy for 2025. Many of these come from my own observations, probably your own observations as well, the observations of our business leaders during their planning, and from our staff during our SWOT analyses. I call this an environmental scan, like the lookout on a ship with a pair of binoculars scanning the horizon to see what is ahead. As I mentioned, we are on track for a full recovery from the impacts of the pandemic. However, around the world, including Ukraine and Gaza, war intentions continue, and it creates global uncertainty and angst. Here in the U.S., there are also uncertainties in the national and state elections and ballot initiatives that may have impacts on our own lines of business. As we know, the state of inflation has been coming down, but goods and services are are more expensive, especially costs related to construction and other capital costs, including equipment necessary for further electrification. We want to remain an employer of choice in the competitive job market here locally, and there are growing costs related to that as well. And the opportunities and threats posed by technology continue to be at the forefront of everyone's mind across the port. Artificial intelligence will require more and more of our attention, will impact everyone in the months and years ahead. We are also aware that many of our systems lack interoperability, and making systems more connected can be a challenge and expensive as we move forward. Regarding our capital plans, we are embarking on our most ambitious plans ever, almost $6 billion over the next five years. In order to deliver on these plans, we must work across the port to make our delivery systems as efficient and effective as they can be. And finally, we must keep a focus on the elements of our triple bottom line, specifically community, equity, and environmental justice. Next slide, please. To summarize the high-level financial state of the port, we have strong demand for our services but are likely plateauing our revenue growth and pressure there's pressure from increased expenses. I'm asking those throughout the port that are writing our budgets to continue to be conservative in the light of our unpredictable economy and closely focused on the needs to achieve our mission. This has served us well in the past. We must continue to make our gateways as efficient as possible as well, and we continue to include investment in our workforce as a fundamental principle for our 2025 budget. Next slide, please. So for our strategies in action, this looks like moderating expense growth where it aligns more with revenue growth, which we can plan to be around 6 or 8, 6 to 8%. We must carefully examine any additional full-time employee requests and ensure that they are justified and necessary. We have to continue to plan for inflation and what we're what we're planning to purchase to be we have to be realistic about what we can achieve in our capital delivery as well. And we must bring an equity mindset to our planning and continue to invest in sustainability, adaptability, and resiliency in our spending and business plans. Next slide, please. So here are just some budget considerations that we want to build in from the very beginning. The first is the workforce. The port has invested heavily in its workforce as a key strategy coming out of the pandemic. Since the pandemic, we have averaged substantial wage growth over the past four years. We'll continue investing in our workforce through payroll and benefits to remain a competitive employer in the region. We believe the compensation project, once fully implemented, will increase our payroll expenses. We're planning for that, but do not know the full impact as of yet. We are also evaluating our budget to ensure that we achieve our equity goals through our own policies, but also through the programs we invest in. We have to develop, we have, we have worked to develop ways to look at our spending through an equity lens. While the needs we have, while the needs that we have are unlimited, we must keep in mind that are realistically available resources that are available to us. So that makes sense for us to implement budget targets throughout the port for the staff to build towards. And finally, I thought our budget retreat with the commission was very successful for us, and based on that initial discussion, I feel very good about the alignment between staff and the commissioners' priorities, the directions in which we're moving and to do that. So Commissioners, with that, next slide, please. Oh, I'll go to Slide 10. With that, Commissioners, I'm getting ready to look at my first review of the budget, and I'd like to turn it over to Michael Tong for to walk through the rest of the budget calendar that we have before us leading through the rest of the year. Michael.
Thank you, Executive Director Metric. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Steve mentioned about, you know, the commission retreat, so I won't go over that on that we already have. So right now, we have the commission development budget briefing today, and then been working with the budget entry this week and next week. We are trying to input all the baseline budget into the budget system in the next couple of weeks. And then we'll ask for the new budget requests that anything about and beyond the baseline budget, we ask department to submit the new budget request form that will be due on August 2, and we hope to get the list from you for all the commission priority as well to our Executive Director Metric. And then after that, the second commission budget retreat, I just learned that you probably is on hold right now, but we'll see, you know, whether it will work out. And then we'll have the executive review of the central service budget and also the after that, the division department budget in August, mid to late August. And then we'll try to put in all the approved new budget item into the system by the end of August and early September. We'll come back to the executive team to review the overall of the budget, you know, in September, from September 10, 11 to 13, first for central services and then for the operating divisions. And then after that, we'll also present to the central service proposed budget and the port wide up on September 24. Next slide, please. And then in the first regular meeting in October, we'll present the operating division, operating and capital budget to you. And then you will also hear the tax levy, job plan of finance briefing in the second regular meeting in October, October 22. And then on the same day, we'll provide you the preliminary budget documents to you. We'll also hope to post it on the port website on the same day or day or two after that to make it available to the public. Then after that, you will have a chance to review the Seaport Alliance budget, and you have a budget study session on October 25, and then the adoption on November 5. You will also hear the introduction of the budget and the public hearing of the proposed budget on November 12, and then we'll have the adoption of the budget on October 19. And then after that, we'll file the statutory budget with King County by the end of November, and then finalize the final budget document in the first week of December. So that's the overall budget schedule. That conclude our presentation, would like to answer any question that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, I want to add, I think that we made one amendment from the schedule, and that's one-on-one meetings with the Commissioners as requested to go over those and talk about the budget alignment. So
Very good.
Those are things we will be scheduling that.
Okay, thank you very much to staff for your thoughtful presentation, and at this time, I will turn to my colleagues for questions and comments. Is anybody online?
I can go.
Thank you, Commissioner Calkins.
One sec. There, does that work?
We got you.
You're finding me in a sidebar conference room as I attend the Washington Public Ports Association, so forgive the drab hotel room interior behind me. But Executive Director Metric, I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. I wanted to ask specifically about, you know, we're in a six-month period here where there are going to be pretty significant decisions made, you know, one by the national electorate regarding which administration we're going to have come January 20, 2025, and the other about the whether or not the Climate Commitment Act remains in place in Washington State. And the reason I ask about those in particular, and obviously there's a gubernatorial change, but I think those two in particular have special implications for our work in ports. You know, we're seeing more and more funding come through Climate Commitment Act to support our sustainability, electrification efforts, our efforts to reduce local air particulate emissions. On the federal level, we see essentially two candidates with very different visions for the development of the port of the future. And so I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on, I've been thinking about a sort of matrix where in one corner you have a red federal administration and no CCA, and in the other quarter, you have a blue federal administration and CCA, and then, of course, the variance of a blue administration and no CCA and red administration and CCA. So in each of those four scenarios, we're looking at very different potential budget implications and kind of operating environments for the port. And so I'm wondering what kind of thinking you're doing on the highest level around what kind of preparation we could do for each of those scenarios?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, that's obviously those are some of the some of the events I was alluding to, and I talked about those, and I've talked to other Commissioners about this as well. I know some of the Commissioners also. So what we're doing is looking at those different scenarios you just laid out and the potential impact on the budget, whether it be on our, because some of those are existing grants, and some there could be potential more grants, or there could be less grants in based on the CCA or at the IRA at the national level. So we're looking at the different options, like understanding the potential impact on us. So we'll be able to do that. We'll probably develop scenarios based on those, based on the information as we come forward. There will probably be ones that we would go forward regardless of a change either way if they're funded, or there's some that may not be able to go forward if we don't have those the funds that would come from the different programs, either at the state level or the or the national level. So we will, we will be doing that assessment, and that will be part of the the work that we bring back to Commissioners when we look at the budget going forward.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions or comments, Commissioner Calkins? Commissioner Felomen? Do you have any other questions or comments, Commissioner Calkins? Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Felomen.
Thank you, Executive Metric. You know, one of the things that I saw recently, I had a conversation with an aviation expert that in trying to, you know, make our case for, you know, the extraordinary demands on the airport and expenses that need to be incurred, and that we often just characterize the airport as the number of passengers. I mean, that is the operational number. But what I've been told is that because Seattle is often a destination, or more often a destination than than other airports and similar airports, that that the that the people are using our infrastructure more rather than, you know, changing flights, that they're going in and out of our gates, and that this is a source of higher demand for even the same number of passengers. And I never really thought of it that way, and I was just thinking that, you know, whether it be the people mover or whatever else, I don't know. But that and now with SAM coming up, that conversation in terms of the, you know, the smallest airport, the fastest growing, but if it's all based on numbers of passengers, I think it misses a little bit of the nature of the demands that are on the airport, for whatever it's worth. I was wondering, when we see, you know, growth at the airport, with any number of planes landing and stuff is another way of looking at it. I don't know whether we can slice and dice the data in other ways to fully appreciate the constraints we work within.
Commissioner, I think that's worth us going back and talking with our business intelligence unit and looking at how we're measuring. That is interesting to say, you know, that the demands upon the infrastructure and different aspects, is it is it a different way to look at that? But I can take that back and talk with the team about that, about the different metrics that we're using, and what does it show when you use those those metrics to look at that, based on just the numbers, as you said, and plainness.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mohammed, do you have any questions or comments at this time? Commissioner Cho?
No, no questions. Always appreciate the great work you, Michael, and Dan's team does every year to get us and keep us on track.
Thank you.
And I also expressed similar concerns about 24 going 25 going forward to Executive Director Metric a few weeks ago, and I sincerely appreciate you taking those in stride and working with us, because I do think that 25 will be one way or another a game changer for many of us from a fiscal standpoint. So thank you for for doing that due diligence for us.
And let me just comment, from fiscal, could be otherwise, other different impacts on policy as well that could have a financial side but also impact us as well.
So my question is, you know, as the city of Seattle and King County both stare down the barrel of a deficit, can you tell us what sets us apart in terms of our financial projections and, you know, why why is it that Port of Seattle doesn't find itself making cuts as compared to some of the other jurisdictions?
Do you want to?
Yeah. Well, let me try it, Michael, and you'd be glad to jump in. I mean, we base, you know, we do, we've been very conservative in that, you know, we've looked at our our revenues and the growth of our revenues, and we've always protected a lot of what we budget is based on the projected growth of the revenues. And, you know, of course, when we hit something like And, you know, of course, when we hit something like the COVID, that was a, that hit for us, but we made cuts accordingly on that. So, so I think that's one of the things that makes it different from us, and, and of course, the tax levy, but we're very prudent about the use of the tax levy as well to do that. But I think it balances because we, we still have growth within those, it may be slowing on the, on the overall growth of those revenues, but of course, the airport is the largest part of those, where the largest part of the budget comes in, and it, we gather those, and then we have the, it's the, the way we operate the airport as well, right, Michael? Because we pay for those bills the way we're set up.
That's why, and also, you know, a loss of the airport revenues, especially aeronautical revenues cost recovery. So, you know, really part that is the operating expense part of that, but also the capital cost that we factor into that, you know, the way in charges at the airport. And then, as Steve mentioned, you know, we are growing, whether it's in the cruise revenue or even the non-aeronautical airport revenues, you know, being going higher than COVID level as well. So we've been kind of monitoring and have been taking a very prudent approach in terms of managing the cost, especially the operating cost, but given the business need and the growing demands, including some of the capital project over at the airport, at the water fund, and some of them definitely translate to some other expenses, you know, but the more FT support and some other aspect of those that would, you know, and then the other part I would mention is the community program, we've been kind of adding more to support the community, and, you know, you have seen those community program have been going, especially since COVID.
No further questions from me, thank you so very much. Oh, Commissioner Mohammed, do you have questions or comments?
I do, I just kind of wanted to make a quick comment. Thank you, Commissioner Mohammed. I just wanted to say thank you to the financial team and Executive Director Metrick for your hard work. And I also thought that the commission retreat, budget retreat was very productive, and many of the community priorities that we, as Commissioners, often hear are being incorporated into the budget process, and I'm looking forward to receiving the final budget proposal and helping pass that. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, President Mohammed. Vice President Hasagawa, I do, I know Lance Little, Managing Director for Aviation is on the line, he may add a little more, maybe it'll answer Commissioner Fellman's question about the metrics and how to do that, but we can answer that right here rather than looking toward.
That sounds great, welcome, Director Little.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon, everyone. Lance Little, Aviation Managing Director. Just to add to what Executive Director Metrick said, Commissioner Fellman, we typically talk about the passenger number, tax numbers. For example, when we say 52 million passengers coming to the airport, but we also break that down in terms of passengers that are originating. In, in Seattle, we break it down in terms of passengers that are just connecting or passengers that are arriving. And we use that as part of our forecasting, for example, to determine what we expect. For example, the parking revenues is, is going to be, for example, what we expect, the revenue, the rental car revenues are going to be, for example, if somebody's just connecting, they're not going to impact parking, they're not going to impact rental car, right? But if they're originating, then they'll impact the on-tran station. But also, in addition to the passenger numbers, we look at, at what we call operations, which is the number of takeoffs and landings that we expect to have in any particular year. We also look at the number of cargo operations that we have. So even though we don't speak about every or all of those various different metrics, we actually look at each and every one of those when we're doing the forecasting for each year when we're doing the budget.
If I could respond, I have no doubt that you use multiple metrics in your analysis, that wasn't my point. My point was in explaining to the public the demands on the airport, and I thought what was interesting was also some comparative context with other airports with perhaps a similar number of passengers, but with, you know, a different mix of destination versus transfers, connecting flights. And that, it, it just, I, I, I'm suggesting as a communication tool, not that you are not scrutinizing the data in any way, every way you can.
And maybe we, after so far, and maybe we can provide more information, as an example, Atlanta may have 100 million passengers, but a significant, maybe 6 to 70% of those passengers are actually connecting passengers, where we have a significantly higher O and D, passengers that originate here and their destination is here as well. So the person you spoke to, they're exactly right. That has a significant, a different impact on the various different services that we provide at the airport. So we can, when maybe when we talk about the budget, we, we've done it in the past, and maybe we need to add a couple of slides that provide more information along that line. So I'll get with Executive Director Metrick, and we can maybe update the, the slides for future presentations.
And, you know, given all we hear about Atlanta, the fact that we have something comparable like that is, is, was eye-opening to me. So I, I just thought it, again, also because we have expansion ambitions, there's, you know, more reasons for it than just numbers of passengers.
Yeah. And in addition, we are doing it on a smaller footprint than almost every other airport, relatively speaking, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and seeing no further questions or comments, I'd like to thank staff for the presentation. And that concludes the business agenda for today, moving us along to, to closing comments or any special motions from my colleagues. Anybody online? Seeing none, we can officially adjourn the meeting, and the time is 1:19 P.M.